Regular meeting number 43 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
................................................................................................ Honored to have my pastor in the house this evening, Reverend John Keeney. If you'd come forward to the podium and lead us in prayer.
Let us join in prayer. God of us all in our diversity, our races, genders, orientations, identities, God of pink and blue and red and all colors, God of those with large homes and no homes, God of those with deep pockets and no pockets, God of box stores and boutiques and restaurants and clothing depots and food pantries, teachers and students of area commissions, community relations, zoning, safety, sanitation, street maintenance and detours, God of the well-known and the unknown, God of the connected and the never connected, of the employed, unemployed and underemployed, those who still try and those who have given up. This council has a huge job being mindful of all the citizens of this community. May it always be aware of the hopes and trust that are placed under its authority and responsibility and grant it wisdom in its decisions for all of us. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Keeney of King Avenue United Methodist Church for joining us tonight. Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginther.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Are there any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Harden. Councilmember Klein?
Yes, Council President. The first is 235X 2015. I'd like to have Lieutenant Sawyer and Chief Whiting come forward the week of October 4th, 2015, in Columbus, Ohio as Fire Prevention Week. And in the resolution, there's this one startling statistic that no smoke alarms were present in more than one-third of home fire deaths, which I think is startling. So floor is yours.
Okay. We're gonna... Actually, we have a little quick slide presentation if we can get that up. If not, I'll talk while they work on that. This year's theme for Fire Prevention Week is "Hear the Beep Where You Sleep." And the goal behind that... I'll let Lieutenant Sawyer go here. Okay, go ahead. The main goal for Fire Prevention Week this year is getting smoke detectors in bedrooms or near the bedrooms in residential structures. A number of fires, what they've determined is smoke detectors really, if they're not in the area, residents don't hear them, the elderly, the children, they're certainly our most at-risk population. And one of the things that we've done in our community alone, we've partnered with the Red Cross. They've been very... We've been very fortunate with them. They've come through, provided funding for detectors and CO detectors. And our last area that we did was two weekends ago, we did Scioto-Southland where we put 140 total detectors in the community in over 300 houses. So we continue that program. Each month, we're putting in detectors. We have a number of at-risk areas in the community that we're putting detectors in. We are, you know, some detectors, we put four or five detectors in a house depending on how many residents, how big the residence is. And we're trying to get as many people as we can. We certainly rely on all our partners in the community to provide detectors for us. Actually, this, for the month of October, Lowe's has agreed to partner with us in Columbus area where they're accepting donations of smoke detectors and CO detectors. CO detectors are probably one of the most difficult for us to get, and those are the detectors we like to put in the elderly community because they're a little bit more challenged sometimes getting around and may not get out. So we try and get those detectors out, and that's one area that we have lacking for is the CO detectors. But our goal this year is to put over 1,200 smoke detectors in residence in the Columbus area, and next year, we intend to try and double that with the program we have going on.
President Ginther.
Lieutenant, yeah.
Councilmember Klein, members of council, director. So thank you again very much for this resolution. It's another Fire Prevention Week. We hope to have a very fire-safe year. I think one of the things that I'm very excited about is we're starting a new program. We would like the community to donate a smoke alarm or carbon monoxide alarm, and they can take that to any city of Columbus fire station all around the county. So hopefully, we can start this drive going off with Fire Prevention Week, and we can have a substantial amount of smoke alarms. So thank you again for the resolution, and hopefully, we have a safe year.
I just saw on the slide, there's actually two types of fire alarms. It looked like there was a photo...
Yes, yes, there is. There's two types. There's ionization and there's photoelectric. And the difference is the photo... The ionization is what we're getting from the Red Cross. The photoelectric costs a little bit more. They're a little bit different detector. One recognizes smoke, the other recognizes smoldering fire, and that's the big difference. We want things that recognize a smoldering fire versus waiting for that smoke, something that burns, it's gonna burn a little bit longer, and that's why we are trying to get them in every bedroom where people sleep and every floor. So the more we have, the better. Obviously, if we had a system where they were all... All the smoke alarms were tied together, it would be much more beneficial, but we're just trying to get as many out there as we can. So we're hoping by putting a larger number in residence, then we'll be able to protect people a little bit better.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant. Next is, and I'll invite the marathon race director, Mr. ... Pardon me, Mr. Blackford to come forward. 243X 2015 to honor and recognize the 36th Nationwide Children's Hospital Columbus Marathon and Half Marathon Sunday, October 18th. So register, it's still a couple... It's probably sold out. It is sold out.
The half marathon is sold out, but you can still do the full if you're ready.
So if you want to gear up and run 26 miles, you have your opportunity to. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Councilman Klein and members of council. I appreciate the resolution again. I'm just here to say thank you. A lot of hard work goes into this event, but we could not do this without the support of council and the city and the various departments, including the fire department and police. It's just an amazing opportunity we have here in the city. We're gonna have 18,000 people on the streets of Columbus on October 18th, and I'm probably most... I'm most proud of the partnership. It's our fourth year with the Nationwide Children's Hospital partnership. Each year, we raise over a million dollars, and it's just a wonderful opportunity that we've been able to deliver on that. I'm even more proud of something that we're announcing this year. It is the inaugural Jesse Owens Jog. This event is a 2.62 mile fun run and walk. It's on Saturday, October 17th. It starts at the Urban League, and it's basically 2.62 miles from the Urban League to North Bank Park. Our industry, the marathon business, has done a terrible job of promoting diversity. Three years ago, we embarked on a program to study, how could we promote diversity, specifically more African-American athletes? And through a variety of summit meetings and small group sessions, we've been able to determine ways to do that. And partnering with the Urban League for this first-ever event is just the start. We also are, knock on wood, on the shortlist to host the National Black Marathoners Association next year. So the efforts... We're taking this seriously, and we will be a leader in the nation for this type of initiative, and it's just the start of great things to come. So thank you again for the support, and I appreciate all you've done for us.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? It's a terrific race. I've had the pleasure of participating in the half, and it was a blast, and I look forward to running again. And thank you for what you do to promote the city internationally and bringing tens of thousands of people to our city for first-time experiences that I know will come back and visit again. I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Councilmember Page?
Thank you, Council President Ginther. I have one resolution this evening, and as I read the title, I would like to invite Tom Soff, the CEO of the Columbus Zoo, Jim Baltizer, the Columbus Zoo Board President, and Keith Schumate, the Chair of the Zoo Levy Committee, to the podium. Resolution 0241X-2015, to endorse Issue 15, the Columbus Zoo and Aquarium Renewal Levy on the November 3rd ballot. As we all know, the Columbus Zoo and Aquarium is an internationally recognized leader in animal conservation and education efforts. The zoo has a more than $220 million annual economic impact on their local economy and employs more than 2,200 people full-time. The zoo's current $0.75 million levy is set to expire at the end of 2015, and maintaining this levy is critical to the operation of the facility. And best of all, this is not a tax increase. Now, I want to repeat, that is not a tax increase. So Council President, I would like to first move for adoption.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, and the floor is now yours.
Thank you. Thank you, President Ginther, councilmembers. We are so proud to be proving results in education and conservation with the Columbus Zoo, and we were recently honored by the Association of Zoos and Aquariums for top honors for Heart of Africa. We are so proud of the millions of guests that come to the Columbus Zoo to be inspired and care about animals and about people. We wouldn't be what we are today if it wasn't for our support, and we want to thank you all for giving us the opportunity back many, many years ago, 1927, and also our friend in Mel Dodge who cared so much about the Columbus Zoo. We are striving to make an impact, and we're thanking you all for your support. And as we've heard, this is not a tax increase. This is vital for us to maintain what we have and keep the zoo great. Thank you very much.
Yes, Councilwoman Tyson.
Thank you, Chairwoman Page. I just want to say again, thank you for... Especially the summer half, for all of our children from many of our recreational parks have the opportunity to be able to come out and really enjoy the Columbus Zoo. And so just thank you for making it open to our community and giving all children an opportunity to be able to come and to be able to have that great zoo experience, and so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Council President. I'd like to say it's a thrill for me to be here this evening to continue my support for the Columbus Zoo back in the days of Mel Dodge. So thank you for all your work. You just do great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Councilmember Paley?
Thank you, Council President Ginther. Before I get to my resolution, I just want to thank Director Bell and the Department of Community Relations for a very successful Neighborhood Best Practices this weekend, and for all those who participated. It was almost standing room only, and for all the councilmembers who showed up to greet our neighborhood leaders as well as participate in panels. We need to keep going with our Neighborhood Best Practices. It's great for our neighborhoods and our community leaders. And then I have Resolution Number 0213X 2015, and tonight, I have the honor and the pleasure of introducing the resolution for First Lady Sherlene Washington and her role in the Eastern Union Missionary Baptist Association. First Lady and Bishop Washington, will you please approach the podium? First Lady Washington is serving her 34th year as the First Lady at Mount Hermon Missionary Baptist Church, where Bishop Donald James Washington is the senior pastor. President Washington and Bishop Washington have been married for over 44 years, and she tells me that is over 16,071 days. Together, they have two children and two grandchildren and hosts of adopted children. President Washington has done great community work through her passion with young ladies and children. Every August, she heads the Women's Auxiliary in promoting a back-to-school drive for kids with items ranging from book bags, pencils, binders, and glue sticks. And additionally, for the past 25 years, she has a program called Share With Love that gives toys and clothing to children and families in need. First Lady Washington has been an elected officer of the Eastern Union Missionary Baptist Association for over 10 years, serving as the Women's Auxiliary Second Vice and First Vice President, and she is currently serving her third year as the Women's Auxiliary President. The Eastern Union Missionary Baptist Association, through the Ohio General Baptist Convention, the EU MBA, has over 60 membered churches throughout Columbus and central Ohio. Thank you, President Washington, for your continued and selfless passion in bettering our community in central Ohio. Congratulations on your many accomplishments. First, I move for passage. Oh, first I have to need to remove it from the table. Thank you. Councilmember Tyson.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginther.
And move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginther.
Madam President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley, Council President Ginther, and other members of council. Thank you very much for this tremendous honor. I am graciously humbled by it. On behalf of the 6,800 women of the Eastern Union Missionary Baptist Association, which is the Columbus, Ohio, Chillicothe, and Newark area I represent, we work viciously, and I say viciously because we have so many people that are in need. I count it a blessing and a joy to be able to bless many children each year with the Share With Love Project. Each Christmas, we have been able to bless over 800 families by mere donations of people like you by making a request for a boy or a girl for a toy. But it has gone even further. We are now blessing people with furniture, washers, dryers, and even being able to place them in a residence. We also work with the Isabel Ridgeway, which we are able to help the senior citizens each Christmas by sharing personal need items and also giving them coats and blankets as needed. We also work with the One Child Foundation, where we are helping mothers to learn to be able to prevent the SIDS death syndrome in just even one child. We're also able to help, as she stated, the back-to-school project, and we donate to many schools, not just our church, but we are community-oriented, and we're trying to help everybody in the city of Columbus and in Chillicothe and in Newark. There is a great need, because the harvest is plentiful, but the labors are few. But I am graciously humbled, and I'm thankful to Bishop Washington for his support. But tonight, I want to thank you, City Council, for your support. God bless you.
Any comments from council? Council President Ginther.
First Lady Washington, just want to thank you for all of your amazing contributions to this community. Fellow to your right hasn't done half-bad either, but I appreciate you caring him for all these years.
Thank you.
But appreciate the difference you're making in the lives of children and families, and we need everyone to follow your lead and step up and contribute the way you and your family have. So thank you.
Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Chairwoman Paley. And First Lady Washington, again, thank you. To be able to serve 6,800 families or represent 6,800 women, but to serve the many families you just discussed is so important to our community. We know that we have a lot of families in need, and certainly, we need people just like you and your 6,800 women to help to provide those services. What a blessing it is. I know we're put... All of us are put on earth to serve, and certainly, you are demonstrating your service to our community. So thank you for looking out for those who may not be able to help themselves. Just appreciate you, appreciate your husband. This is your night, and we just appreciate you, First Lady. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Paley. What a blessing you are, First Lady Washington.
I had the pleasure of attending the conference, and there were quite a few women there serving our community, so thank you for inviting me, and thank you for all that you do, and congratulations.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Council President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Ryan? Anything this evening? Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, President Ginther. I have two resolutions, and the first one is Resolution 240X-2015, and I'm going to ask Marshall Brown to walk towards the podium, please. And the resolution is to declare October 2015 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Columbus, and to recognize the American Cancer Society Central Ohio Region for their advocacy efforts to raise awareness for breast cancer in central Ohio. Whereas, every year, more than 200,000 women are diagnosed with breast cancer in the United States, and whereas breast cancer is the most common reportable cancer among women in Ohio, regardless of race, accounting for 28% of all cancers diagnosed in women, and whereas the risk of developing breast cancer increases with age, with approximately 96% of the women diagnosed with breast cancer are aged 40 and over. Whereas, breast cancer ranks second in cancer deaths among women after lung and bronchitis... Bronchitis, mortality rates have steadily declined in women since 1989, with the largest decrease occurring in younger women. And whereas, numerous studies have shown that early detection saves lives and increases treatment options, and whereas improved mammography screenings to detect breast cancer early, along with better treatment options and increased awareness, have made breast cancer a more curable disease than it was 30 years ago. And whereas, the American Cancer Society helps women stay well by encouraging them to take the steps to reduce breast cancer. For women who are diagnosed with breast cancer, the society provides information, day-to-day help, and emotional support to guide them through every step of their experience and to help them to get well. Whereas, the American Cancer Society Central Ohio Region is working with many community partners to advocate on the importance of breast cancer awareness during October. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus, this council recognizes the Importance of Breast Cancer Awareness Month and commends the American Cancer Society Central Ohio Region for their work to raise awareness for breast cancer in central Ohio. I move for passage. Thank you.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I also want to thank my colleagues for all wearing pink today. If there has some pink. And so thank you. And so now, Mr. Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you. President Ginther, thank you. Councilmember Tyson and other councilmembers. I work with the American Cancer Society. I'm the community manager for Making Strides Against Breast Cancer, which is our only cancer-specific event that the American Cancer Society does. It kind of illustrates the importance of breast cancer awareness, breast cancer education, breast cancer treatment, research, and all those things wrapped into one. The statistics that you brought up are a scary statistic, but 30 years ago, those statistics were a lot greater. And so we're happy with the fact that those statistics continue to come down, and we hope that they continue to come down in the years to come. Here in Franklin County and in the city of Columbus, there'll be 9,000 men and women diagnosed with breast cancer this year. That's a lot of people, and the unfortunate part about that is, is that the second statistic, that about 1,700 of those people might lose that battle. And so through efforts of events like Making Strides Against Breast Cancer, where we raise money that helps support our local patient support services here in the... Even in the Columbus community, and Look Good, Feel Better, and Reach to Recovery and Road to Recovery, we give patients not only an opportunity to step through this journey with help, with support, with research that's being done here in the local community as well, with money that's donated, but it will help spread awareness, as you said, to encourage people to get mammographies, to encourage people to do self-checks, and hopefully, next year, when we come back for October, that those statistics will go down even a little bit more. So we thank you.
And share some information... Share some information about the walk.
Oh, of course. Our walk will be this Sunday. Making Strides Against Breast Cancer will be located at COSI, and it's a nice non-competitive 5K that we do downtown. Our opportunity to turn just a little bit of the downtown pink on Sunday morning. Registration will open at 6:30. The walk itself starts about 7:30, and so we're hoping that everybody who wants to come out, there's no registration fee, so nobody has to pay any money to join and be part of the walk. We want it to be a celebration of our survivors, a support system for our patients, and a way of honoring those who are no longer with us.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. I just want you to know that because of the research and the efforts that you have been doing, I'm a 14-year survivor now, so...
That's what we like to hear. Thank you.
And I will be walking. I always walk then. I don't run. I walk.
Well, no, it's a walk, so you don't have to run at all.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
My next resolution is 0242X-2015, and I'm going to ask for Kyle Taylor Parker to move towards the podium, and it is to recognize Kyle Taylor Parker for securing the lead role of Lola in Kinky Boots the Musical. And this really is an honor and a privilege to present this resolution because I have... Councilmember, and let's see, when Kinky Boots won its Tony Award in 2013, I think I bought the newspaper in and showcased it. There was a young man on the front of the New York Times in the art section that, you know, that Kinky Boots had won for the best musical. And I think I know I did. I shared, because Director, oh my gosh, McKnight was still here, and I shared that this was a young man that came here every summer and had the opportunity to take advantage of our Davis... The Davis Performing Arts Center. And he would come every summer, and is honest sitting in the back, and she... I mean, this is a great family, and she made sure her nephew came to Columbus every single summer to spend time with her family from Wisconsin, but to utilize our services. And so it really is an honor and a privilege to recognize Kyle with this resolution, and I'm going to just share this. So it's to recognize Kyle Taylor Parker for securing the lead role of Lola in Kinky Boots the Musical. And whereas Kyle Taylor Parker is an African-American performer...
now playing, well, it starts tomorrow at the Ohio Theater through Sunday, the 11th, of 2015. Whereas in Kinky Boots, Mr. Parker gives a mesmerizing performance as Lola, a nightclub headliner who dresses in drag, although his birth name is Simon. Whereas Mr. Parker developed his love of acting in his youth and was inspired to perform on Broadway after seeing the Tony Award-winning production, Annie. And whereas Mr. Parker dedicated many summers in his youth to attending and performing at various performing arts camps, including Howard University Performing Arts Theater Camp in Washington, DC, Interlochen Performing Arts Academy in Interlochen, Michigan, the Davis Performing Arts Center in Columbus, Ohio, and Young Performers Theater Camp in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, just to name a few. Whereas Mr. Parker lived in West Africa for three years as a young child, while his mother worked in public health to provide individuals with tools they needed to live healthy lives. During this time, Mr. Parker sang and performed in church and community events, and eventually recorded his first CD at the age of nine. And whereas while in high school, Mr. Parker wrote, produced, and choreographed, choreographed his own stage play entitled Urban Underground. The play was financed and promoted by the Milwaukee Performing Arts Center, and performances were also held at the center. Whereas Mr. Parker has shown through his recent successes as a performer that a bright future lies ahead, and that the name Kyle Taylor Parker is destined for bright lights of Broadway, which he's already been playing on Broadway, because when the lead actor on Broadway, he played on Broadway in the Tony Award play. But also, when the lead actor is also the same character, is not playing, he plays that actor on Broadway. So, now therefore be it resolved by this council of the City of Columbus that this council recognized Broadway performer Kyle Taylor Parker for securing the lead role of Lola in Kinky Boots the Musical, and wishes him continued success in all his, in all of his endeavors. And I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. This play that he's in is really about diversity and self-acceptance. But it was important, Kyle just flew, just flew in Columbus to accept this resolution from Baltimore, where the play was just performing. But I think it's really important for young people seeing this and who are soon listening to Kyle, to just know that dreams do come true. And if you really just work hard and follow your passion and follow your dreams, you know, the world is yours. And so, that's why it's so important to recognize you. So, with that, Kyle, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. It is an honor to accept this. Being a performer is my life's work at the very young age of 26-years-old. I've achieved a lot. And support, I think, is the reason why I've achieved so much. No one ever told me no. When I was six-years-old, I decided that I wanted to be a singer. I knew that I wanted to sing, dance, and act. And I said to my mom, that's what I'm going to do with my life. And she never said no. And for that reason, I can do all that I can do. So, thank you for this. And it's another yes that I will carry with me for the rest of my life. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. And when he was small, and anytime we said Kyle sing, he would, on a drop of, on a drop of a penny, he would sing to us. And so, I hope we get to go to see Kinky Boots. He just has a beautiful voice. He said, oh, Councilwoman Klein, sing, sing, sing. I don't know. Kyle, you.
Come see the show. It's my day off, but come tomorrow. It'll be great.
The last comment on Kyle, his aunt made sure 60 tickets were sold for, for us to come and see him tomorrow. 60 tickets from Columbus residents, so what a blessing. Thank you. And then I have just one announcement, and it is, on Wednesday, October the 7th, from 11 o'clock until 2:00 PM, the 14th Annual Justice Exposition in Health and Wellness Fair will occur at the Franklin County Courthouse, 373 South High Street. This event is free and open to the public. The justice exposition will have a variety of treatment agencies, law enforcement agencies, and other community programs that serve and operate in Franklin County. Many counseling providers will be in attendance to highlight their available services, and will, and local law enforcement agencies will showcase their community programs. The Health and Wellness Fair will highlight health care-related services available to Franklin County residents. Various health screens will be available. Ohio Health Mobile Mammography and Bone Density will be on hand, as well as flu shots. Again, the Justice Expo. And then on this Wednesday, the 7th, at 4:00, I will also convene a committee hearing for the Finance, Health, and Human Services, and Workforce Development Committees. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Tonight, I'm offering Resolution 0244-X dash 2015 to honor and celebrate the 125th birthday of Columbus native Eddie Rickenbacker and to name October 8 Eddie Rickenbacker Day in Columbus. I'd like to invite to the podium Michael Aaron, Lucy Wolf, and others from the Rickenbacker Wood Foundation to accept the resolution. As they make their way to the front, I am reminded that Eddie Rickenbacker was far more than a war hero, but a distinguished one at that. He was a pioneer who embodied an American can-do spirit that allowed him to excel in both the public and private sectors. And now, thanks to many of the creative and driven people who are here with us tonight. His boyhood home along Livingston Avenue is about to become a centerpiece of redevelopment and education for Columbus young people to inspire another generation of entrepreneurs and community leaders. I move for adoption. Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginther.
Resolution adopted. Ms. Wolf, would you like to make any comments?
Good evening, President Ginther and members of council. It gives me great pleasure to accept this resolution on behalf of the 125th birthday of Eddie Rickenbacker. Our ace of aces survived two world wars, raced in driving park, owned Indian 500 for a time, and owned Eastern Airlines as well. Very entrepreneurial gentleman. I have here my, members of my board, two members, Brian Scarpino and John Zukowski, who's museum specialist, and our, of course, our executive director, Michael Aaron. We look forward to the Buckeye Community Hope Foundation Kent Place Homes project, collaborating with them, hopefully having that little museum of all the artifacts inside the house at some point, and all of the other neighborhood community activities that are planned on that project. Thank you very much.
Any other comments, Michael, or?
President Ginther, thank you for the resolution, members of council. I just wanted to announce to Columbus that on October 8, Captain Rickenbacker's 125th birthday. We invite you to join the board members and others, as well as the Columbus Downtown High School Junior ROTC, who will be out having a replaying at Captain Rickenbacker's memorial, Section 58, 1,000 Green Lawn Avenue. And at 3:00 PM, we will host a groundbreaking celebration at Captain Rickenbacker's home, 1334 East Livingston Avenue, 3:00 PM, all happening October 8. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you. Gentlemen, any other comments? Councilmembers, any comments for this group? Just want to thank you so much for what you're doing, not just honor an American hero, Columbus icon, but using his legacy and his experiences to inform and grow a next generation of leaders in our great city. So, Captain Rickenbacker, we're doing you right. City Attorney? City Attorney's Office? Judge Barrows, anything from the courts?
No, thank you, sir.
Any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance 2396-2015. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinances 2408 and 2426-2015. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 2160, 2173, and 2220-2015. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 2206-2015.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolution of expression 229X-2015. Finance Committee, ordinance is 20, excuse me, one ordinance, 2311-2015. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance is 2319, 2326, 2327, 2330, 2333, 2351, 2354, and 2378-2015. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 2344, 2433-2015. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 2065, 2080, 2182, 2187, 2193, 2199, 2235, 2236, 2237, 2279, 2306-2015. Development Committee, ordinance is 1929, 2338, 2362, 2388, 2400, 2401, 2402, 2404, and 2411-2015. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 2316, 2317-2015. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0146, 147, 149, 171, 172, 173, and 174-2015.
I don't believe we have any speakers for the consent agenda this evening. May I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll by voice.
Harden. Klein.
Yes, with the exception of 2311-2015, on which I am abstaining.
Page.
Yes.
Paley. Ryan. Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Yes, consent agenda carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in the emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. I have ordinance 2508 dash 2015 to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with the National League of Cities, National League of Cities, NLC, for the purpose of the city hosting and promoting the 2016 National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials, NBC Leo, annual summer conference, to authorize expenditure of $35,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. This conference would be held, if we were able to, if we are approved, would be held in July of 2016. They would be between 100 and 150 participants at a minimum coming to the three-day conference. And then, there's an early bird additional day on that Wednesday. The $35,000 fee is contingent upon us officially being awarded as a host for 2016. And this is part of the supporting documentation. To be able to get the conference here, we have to be able to commit that we would support the infrastructure of this event. And upon getting it, then, of course, we would then submit the $35,000. During those, really, four-day conference, we would showcase our local best practices, the municipal programs, the community projects to the rest of the country. And so, within previous years, we've held this conference in Marymar, Florida, Milwaukee, Rochester, and Beaumont. And it's really Beaumont, Texas. And so, it's really time to bring the delegation to Columbus and showcase all the wonderful programs and, again, and projects that we have in Columbus, so the other cities could be able to emulate our great work. And so, with that, I would like to thank my, Councilmember Klein. Thank you.
Councilmember Tyson, I know that you've worked diligently in your role at the National League of Cities to make this a possibility for the city of Columbus to highlight it on a national stage through your work. So, as a colleague, I'd like to thank you for doing that legwork in advance in preparation for us to hopefully land this conference. And I think this is a wise expenditure for the National League of Cities, so that we can hopefully land the conference here in the city of Columbus. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you. And this certainly would be all of us. I mean, it's just, the entire council would be hosting, because I think that we have a fabulous body. And I really do want to show what the council's been doing and what the administration's been doing to my colleagues. So, thank you, Councilmember Klein. And with that, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I would now like to move to Health and Human Services. Thank you. The first ordinance I have is 2318-2015 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health for Women, Infants, and Children, known as WIC, the program in the amount of $6,458,221, to authorize the appropriation of $6,458,221 from the Unappropriated Balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. The WIC program is currently serving 31,196 nutritionally at-risk women, infants, and children. WIC is one of the nation's most successful and cost-effective nutrition intervention programs. It is credited with contributing to longer pregnancies, fewer premature births, lower incidence of low birth weight infants, fewer infant deaths, a greater likelihood of receiving prenatal care, as savings in healthcare costs, and improved breastfeeding rates. And so, with that, I would ask my colleagues to support the acceptance of the, this grant.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And now, I have ordinance 2325-2015 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Nationwide Children's Hospital for the provision of six WIC clinics at their facilities, to authorize expenditure of $596,730, $730, I'm sorry, from the Health Department's Grants Fund, and to waive competitive bidding provisions of the city codes, and to declare an emergency. This, this ordinance is for six WIC clinics, which will be housed, which are housed in the main, main hospital, Linden, West Side, Northland, Whitehall, and Hamilton Road. The caseload is right now 4,952 individuals are there, with nearly 14%, which is nearly 14% of the total Franklin County WIC caseload. This breaks down to 716 women, 1,267 infants, and around 2,900 children over the age of one. I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance 2355-2015 to authorize the appropriation of $49,000 in revenue fees from the Unappropriate Balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund for the dental sealant grant program and to declare an emergency. The dental sealant program is to prevent dental care is among children, among school-aged children. The program targets the second and sixth grades as their permanent molars are erupting. In 2014, 4,982 children received dental screenings from this program, and around 3,600 children received dental sealants, which is 96% of those. The sealant really, this program, the program provides care to children at high risk of decay and a low likelihood of having access to dental care by targeting schools with the greater than 40% of children enrolled in the free and reduced-price meal program in Columbus City, Southwestern, and Whitehall schools. This is really an important program for our children, and I would ask my colleagues to move for passage. Second.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginther.
And thank you. The last ordinance I have is 2367-2015 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety in the amount of $125,000 for the Safe Communities Program, which provides expanded traffic safety services for the dissemination of safety awareness and education forms throughout Columbus and Franklin County, and to authorize the appropriation of $125,000 from the Unappropriated Balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund. And sure, I think Councilmember Harden is also a co-sponsor of this ordinance. And this ordinance is really a traffic safety program for And this ordinance is really a traffic safety program for Columbus Public Health funded by the Ohio Department of Safety, and its mission is to reduce the number of traffic-related injuries and fatalities through interventions that combine education, providing resources, and changing the built environment. In 2015, Franklin County Safe Communities attended 43 community events and reached over 14,000 people. And so we just want to make sure that this is an important ordinance because it's through media events, it supports the click-it-or-ticket drive, drive sober, or get pulled over. So thank you for this, allowing me to share this ordinance and ask my colleagues to approve it. Councilmember Harden?
Thank you, Councilmember, or Chair, President Tyson, for bringing this piece forward. This is a great partnership between the Public Service Department and Public Health, and the work that is being done to keep communities safe and really youth safe around schools is really admirable. The grants that we've been able to receive and the work that's been able to be done is really appreciated. So thank you for your leadership, and thank you for allowing me to support.
Thank you so much. And I would like to move for passage.
Seconds?
Second.
Second. Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
And thank you. That's all the ordinance I have in my committees this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Public Utilities Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. One piece in Public Utilities, 1813-2015. This legislation authorizes the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a planned modification of Professional Engineering Service Agreement with URS Corporation, designed for the Big Walnut Augmentation Rickenbacker Interceptor Lockborn Subtrunk, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,104,972.92 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, and to amend the 2015 capital improvements budget to provide sufficient budget authority and to declare an emergency. Director Davies.
Chairman, excuse me, Chairman Klein, President Ginter, members of council, this is a continuation of the work that we've done, in part with the Development Department and others, to spur growth in the Rickenbacker area. As you may recall, we finished a large tunnel several years ago, the Boari Tunnel, and this subtrunk will come off of that and go into Lockborn and also into the Jet Area, which is over 900 acres of potential future development, which the city will share in the revenue.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Recreation and Parks Committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. This evening in Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance 2164-2015 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with Reynolds Farm Equipment Incorporated for the purchase of Lastec 721 XR articulating mower decks, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Chapter 329 of the city codes, to authorize the expenditure of $19,604.17 from the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. Director Collins, can you speak briefly to why we're waiving competitive bidding?
Chairman Page, Council President Ginter, members of council, thank you. Yes, this is an attachment that we use for our mowers on it, specific to our athletic fields. We've had tremendous success with it as it articulates to the different undulating ground and allows us not to scalp athletic fields. So we specifically requested this piece of equipment, and that's why the bid request.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. And we have ordinance 2345-2015 to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with Tyveco Incorporated for the Playground Improvements 2015 Project, to authorize the expenditure of $322,300 with a contingency of $26,700 for a total of $349,000 from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund and the Health General Obligation Bond Fund, to authorize the city auditor to transfer $313,590 within the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund, to authorize the city auditor to transfer $34,000 within the Health General Obligation Bond Fund, and to amend the 2015 capital improvement budget and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
And President Ginter, may I move on to the Education Committee? Thank you. We have ordinance 2277-2015 to authorize and direct the Director of Education to enter into an agreement with Future Ready Columbus in an amount of $100,000 as part of the city's commitment to the organization and to help the organization succeed in its mission, to authorize the expenditure of $100,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. I would just like to ask Director Johnson to speak briefly on Future Ready and this legislation.
President Ginter, Chair Page, thank you for the opportunity to speak about this ordinance today. As you know, the most important mission of the Department of Education is to provide universal access to all four-year-olds living in the city of Columbus with high-quality preschool experience. So Future Ready is one of our most important partners in our goal. Future Ready Columbus is chaired by Mayor Coleman. Future Ready Columbus will only succeed if all of us are invested in our work around education. The entire community has to be invested, and that includes us as well. So this ordinance will provide Future Ready with some of the support it needs so that they can help us reach our goals.
Thank you, Director Johnson. I would just like to thank you, as well as Deputy Director Smidow, for the work that you're doing in the education field. We all know the importance of our four-year-olds receiving a quality education, and the partnerships and relationships that you are building and establishing has proven to be beneficial for our young people, not only in pre-k and kindergarten, but throughout their lives. So thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you, President Ginter. I have nothing further this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Our final committee this evening is the Technology Committee. Councilmember Ryan chairs the committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. Tonight, in technology, we have ordinance 2307-2015 is to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to renew a contract with Business Software, Inc., BSI, for software maintenance and support associated with the CRISP project, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, and to authorize the expenditure of $11,000 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Internal Services Fund.
Ask for, I ask for move for passage. Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
That is all I have, darling.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Anything else to come before council this evening? We do not have any non-agenda speakers, so we will reconvene for zoning at 6:30. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
Stand adjourned.
Pink, 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 pink.
Regular meeting number 44 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
Any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, they're not.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, they're not.
Thank you. We will now go to the zoning committee. I chair that committee. All members serve on the committee this evening in zoning. We have 2267-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.04, ARO Apartment Office District, and 3372.607D landscaping and screening of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1597 Cleveland Avenue, to permit a parking lot with reduced development standards in the ARO Apartment Office District. The applicant is the City of Columbus Land Bank, care of Danny Pop, agent, 855 East Cook Road, Columbus, Ohio, 43224. Proposed use is a parking lot. City Department's recommendation is approval. South London Area Commission recommended approval. If there are any questions or comments regarding this legislation, I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
Passed. Next is 2334-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.04, ARO Apartment Office District, 3312.09 aisle, 3312.25 maneuvering, and 3372.607D landscaping and screening Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1627 Cleveland Avenue, to permit a parking lot with reduced development standards in the ARO Apartment Office District. The applicant is City of Columbus Land Bank, care of Danny Pop, agent, 855 East Cook Road, Columbus, Ohio, 43224. Proposed use is a parking lot. City Department's recommendation is approval. South London Area Commission recommended approval. Any questions or comments regarding this legislation? If not, move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
Passed. And finally is 2357-2015 to rezone 4980 Central College Road, 43081, being 1.02 plus or minus acres on the north side of Central College Road, 340 plus or minus feet west of Course Drive, from RR Rural Residential District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is David B. Maleka Architects LLC, care of Amanda Dunfield, agent, 144 East State Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. Proposed use is eating and drinking establishment or office use. The Development Commission recommended approval. City Department's recommendation is approval. Any questions or comments regarding this legislation? Seeing none, move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
Passed. Is there anything else to come before the zoning committee this evening? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
Stand adjourned.